Thank you everyone for your time and joining us today. The session will focus on the field worker programme. So hopefully that's what you're expecting. I know there's a lot of great activity going on this week. Personally, I attended a deep dive about dashboards on Monday, and I garnered a lot of value from that. So hopefully today we'll provide the same for you all. Just quickly, some housekeeping. So the chat is disabled. That's just to allow for the presenters to focus on the presentation. But there will be a Q and A section at the end. So we anticipate for about 20, 25 minutes of presenting, and then an open floor, people to put their hands up and so on. But if something does come to mind, there is a Q and A button on the Teams app. So feel free to use that. Also, today is being recorded, so colleagues who can't make it, if you want to run back the session, you'll have the option to do so. I won't go into the details just yet. I'll allow my colleague Azim Akhtar, agile product coach, to talk through that. But just to contextualise today, my name's Amani Ahmed. I'm the lead user researcher at Birmingham City Council. Have been here for about seven months now. Well, that's gone fast, thinking about it. The Field Worker Programme has been on a journey for two years. And the reason I mention this is because as an outsider coming in with a user-centred design hat on, I've seen a real growth, maturity within the programme just over the last half a year that I've been here. So I can only imagine what the growth's been like over the last few years. You know, we're really engaging with users, i.e. Birmingham City staff who are out there in the field to ensure the app works for them. And we'll hear from the lovely Carol Gordon, who is one of our service managers. It's, you know, it's all well and good, us as a product development team, all singing, all dancing, saying we built or developed an app. But ultimately, if the shoe was on the other foot and I was listening to a talk about another product or tool, I'd want to hear from the users themselves. So we'll have an opportunity to hear from Carol. So without further ado, I'll pass it over to Azim.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Hi everyone, my name's Azim Akhtar. I'm an agile product coach. And I began the journey with the Field Worker Project, better known as the Birmingham Guardian. So firstly, I would like to say that this journey started off just at the beginning of Covid. So just as we were entering into the Covid and the lockdown, so the first lockdown, this is when we actually started this. So and on the back of that, this was probably the... It's probably our first kind of real agile and user-centred project that we were going to initiate. Because we've been new as an organisation, as Birmingham City Council, to the agile process. So we've taken a very typical GDS approach to our... In the way that we handled this, so we did a discovery that lasted for about between 11 to 12 weeks. I led on the discovery, then we moved on to an alpha phase where we kind of tested some of the assumptions that we made, really understood whether we can actually take on the challenge that we, or the problem that we learnt about in the discovery. We then went on to a beta phase. And alpha and beta have been run by a delivery manager, a permanent delivery manager within Birmingham City Council. And I've kind of overseen and coached the teams from that point onwards. Okay, so this all started off with us looking and wanting to understand what or how our field workers work within Birmingham City Council. You can see a depiction of Birmingham, of Birmingham, the city. You can see some of the landmarks here. You've got the Bull Ring, you've got Cannon Hill Park and others. Now, within the city, we have a number of field workers that go out there to do a number of roles. And one of the, and some of the issues that came back or some of the pain points that were captured as we went and took a cross-section of view of all our field workers to actually look into them and understand their problems. We understood that actually a lot of them really had a difficulty capturing information whilst they were out within the field. That may have been due to connectivity. That may be due to the fact that they had to access a number of back office systems. And they would have to do that separately with devices potentially that were not appropriate for them. So the whole retrieval of information and the processing of information was a real difficulty for our field workers. And that was having a clear effect upon the service that we were offering back to our citizens. The other considerable issue that came up or the pain that was experienced was around enough tools or capability for us to manage our risk whilst out within the city. And this is around the issue of lone working. But additionally, about the issue of the fact that were our field workers aware of the risks that they were walking into, potential risks with regards to potential areas within Birmingham that they need to take, that they need to put in or travel with somebody else to that location or with regards to a citizen that they're seeing or with regards to a particular location. So there was still some difficulty for our service areas to, or our field workers within the service areas to really understand some of the risks that they were walking into on a daily basis. So we came up with a concept that we named the Birmingham Guardian. And there's again, this kind of key element that I've been speaking about, well, two key elements, which is one around the safety of our staff within Birmingham and them carrying out their role. But the other one was this issue around them being able to do their job without difficulty, i.e. they can collect information, they can process information and access information when they wanted to, whether offline or online, meaning whether they were in an area that was difficult for them to get connectivity. And we wanted a single platform that could help us join together our field workers and in effect, bring together the two communities, which is our field workers that were delivering our front-end services to our citizens and bring our citizens closer to our field workers in the ability for them to understand when there's appointments being made, when, if they need to rearrange appointment, they can, on the day, they can actually inform our field workers. And it's that interactivity, that communication that we wanted to increase upon as well. So the way that the solution works is that it is a single skin, and I use the word skin because it is a single application from a mobile app that has the ability to access our line of business applications. And you can see a list of some of them there in the middle. And it has all these capabilities that it can offer the field workers. Again, safety was a big driver to what we wanted to do with this platform. So currently today...
Once you upload the questions, here, it's here, it's here.
So currently, the way that we manage risk is very functional within the various different areas. So we can't see risk necessarily across our directorates. And this was something that we wanted to take on. Now, you know, don't get me wrong, this wasn't something that was a walk in the park in the sense that we came into this knowing it's going to be easy for us to establish this. We had a lot of challenges around our data and understanding how we were going to manage some of our data and bring that data together as well. But one of the things that we wanted to do with this platform was to offer some basic level of lone working and a kind of central risk marker database. One of the key things for the success of this was to ensure that we bring about the key agile principles around reusability, developing in a modular fashion to allow us to scale this across our field workers. What we didn't want was a solution that we were going to bring together just for our colleagues within housing or within adult social care. We wanted a platform that could be versatile, that can bend around the various different nuances within the various, within the different service areas. Now, what we did realise from the UR, and this was the beauty of the UR, that helped us actually understand there was a lot of commonality in terms of the features. Maybe our services worked differently, but there was a lot of commonality in terms of what they wanted from a feature and a product feature, a point of view. And that allowed us to think about actually having a single platform for individuals to be able to utilise. Now, I would say that the fundamental backbone to the success of this was our service areas and the engagement we had with them. You're going to hear from one today and from Carol and her own experience in terms of how the team worked with her and took her through this journey. At the beginning, we started off with a product owner group, or it was called a product owner group. And we invited a number of service areas from the various different directorates to come and join us and help us actually establish what are the key priorities that need to be built into this platform, help us actually decide what is the elements or the features that have the greatest value that should be created and we should be moving ahead with them. I think this was probably what empowered us and gave us that real mandate to move forward with strength as we moved through the project. The benefits are fairly clear from the fact that this... So initially, this came in as a real driver to improve the way our field workers worked from a efficiency point of view. But take away some of the challenges that they had and we learned from the UR. So it would help us, help them with the kind of reduction of the admin. You know, we now have field workers being able to go out, actually put information directly into the platform. That gets pushed into their line of business, their main back office system, rather than actually taking notes. So that's the side of it. But then you've got this issue of the fact that we've started to look at how we can reduce our DNAs, for example, did not attend. How can we reduce the fact that our citizens miss appointments or our field workers are late to an appointment? How do we bridge that gap of communication? Where we can ease that and get better communication, therefore reducing our DNAs? And there's a number of other areas around safety there as well. So the application itself, it is a combination of a mobile app and a number of other layers that make this up. There's three key products or components to this that make up the one single platform, and that's the digital forms. And it's really important that you understand what we've in effect done is been able to build a platform that allows us to organically build digital forms for any of our service areas with a very, with very little amount of additional development. So it's configurable forms that we've actually put together. And then there's a risk marker, central repository that we put together and some limited lone working capability. I'll just show this just at a high level. So the way that the design of this was actually put together was the fact that we have a very significant integration layer that allows us to talk to our line of business applications. And that then in effect serves that information back to our mobile app. So what we didn't want to do was to create a new back office system for housing or for the others. We wanted this to be a facilitation for our field workers to work more efficiently, easier and safer within the field. But we certainly didn't want to help them create a new system that they want. We wanted to go onto the back of the systems that they've got and just make it easier for them to be able to access those systems out in the field. So here's some screenshots of the application or the app. It is single sign-on. Here's some of the lone working elements to it. So offline was a real challenge for us. We built this in a tool called Zamarin, which is a cross-platform mobile application platform that's a Microsoft platform that allows us to rapidly create mobile app solutions. And one of the things that we struggled with was this issue of when you're in a dead spot or you're in an area where there's low signal, we wanted it to be able to cache information, just limited information for them to be able to do their job and then push that back. We actually worked very closely with Microsoft on this because we were pushing some of the capability of, not just Zamarin and some of the agile capability that we actually utilise in the backend as well. And I think the partnership with Microsoft in working to get to this point was actually key to unlocking some of that technical challenge that we had as well. We've got the risk marker. Now, risk marker for individuals who don't actually know what that term means. It's, risk marker is a marker that we put against an individual, a location on an area. And we do it with the safety in mind for not just our stuff, but for them as well. So we put a marker there to say that you need to be aware that, for example, a citizen's been abusive due to the fact that they, for whatever reason, and you need to take caution when you're there. Now, those markers at the moment are segregated in a number of our directorates. Now, we're bringing those together. And it's that challenge of bringing data from various different systems together that was the biggest challenge for us. But again, we brought that and we started to do that now. And you don't have to have access to the application for you to be able to actually see the main repository. So you don't need to be a service area that's already on boarded. We have given the ability for anyone who is within Birmingham and who needs to go out into the field to be able to securely, securely access the risks for their own directorate, which are, some of them could be private, and then the global risks that are within Birmingham City Council as a whole. And actually, on that point, the element of security was really important to us. The whole issue around making sure that the data from source is tracked, who accesses that data, how it's accessed, and who sees that, all of that. And we used a federated model where it allows us to actually ensure that access back our line of business applications was reflected within our main application. Okay, I'm just going to pass through this. The presentation will be given out. And here's some of the screens that we have for the mobile patrol officers. One of the things I would say is that we have, the usability of this was really key. So the ability for our users to be able to navigate a form that's got 100 questions on it, that was really key for us to be able to do that. Okay, so I'm going to just play a video that has been done by Department of Leveling Up, who have funded some of the piece of work here. And then I'm going to pass it over to Carol.
There's no volume coming out, so...
Is there no volume?
Hmm, no.
Okay, that's fine. We'll skip that and let's go straight to Carol.
In the flesh.
In the flesh. And Carol was going to be on there. So it was just going to be a good introduction to Carol. So over to you, Carol.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that is a really good induction for me. Welcome to everybody that's online today. And my name is Carol Gordon and I'm one of the senior rent managers for the Rent Service. It's really been an honour for me to work with the various teams on the Birmingham Guardian app. So let me just tell you about my journey and I will tell you about the good, the bad and the ugly. I'm allowed to do that, okay? So I think with the Field Workers Project, Amani alluded to it, that Birmingham City Council were quite creative, I think, in setting up a products owners group. And I think that was really key because you are talking about a lot of managers, different levels from across Birmingham and the service areas. And we needed to have buy-in. Buy-in is the key. So if you haven't got buy-in, I'll always say, if you haven't got buy-in from the top, you can't really expect your housing officers or your, you know, your field workers to have buy-in. So it's really important. I learnt a lot from these meetings. I didn't always understand things because for me, this was something really different that Birmingham was trying. I was used to having corporate projects passed down to us, almost like off the shelf, if you like, and we would just tweak it. But to have the Field Workers Project, yeah, I think you did need to have the background of what Birmingham wanted to achieve. So my role was about setting up a focus group straight away. I knew what I wanted from the project owners group. And I thought, yeah, this could actually work because this is the first time that managers have been given the ability to design a user interface. And that was, that was it for me. I felt like I was, you know, in Disney World because that's the creativity room. And that went really well for my focus group. And the focus group was for about nine months. And I met with them. The focus team were actually my housing officers and a couple of my change officers as well because we needed to have that balance in our approach. So I met with them every two weeks and that's scoping out the requirements and stuff. But the biggest thing for myself, for the service area, is that I don't think people realise always working on the project almost full-time. I had full-time engagement with the sprint team, with their developers. There was just so many different people that I had to work with. But because I had a little bit of knowledge and experience about opening our backend, our database for customers, because we did that a couple of years ago for housing online, I thought, okay, this is almost the same, but we're going to open the backend up now to our internal customers, which is our housing officers. So I got the vision straight away and I was able to run with that. One of the key things I do, I've put some notes down because I just want to make sure that I give you a fair assessment. One of the things, I think, for managers, if you don't understand it, that's okay. But ask the questions. Ask, ask, ask questions. Because when I was working with the developers team, I think I was kind of privileged because they let me into their kitchen, if you like, the technical kitchen, where I could see what was expected and, okay, how are we going to bring that to the front? And they, you know, we understood about APIs and I understood some of the jargon that was talking about. So I was able then to interpret that and bring it to our housing officers. You definitely need to understand your own processes and what you feel the housing officers or your field workers are going to need when they do a visit. I can't overly stress that. And when you're designing it, try not to be restrictive in your own mind. Your job is to be creative. This is what you want. I want this, that, that, that. And if the developers can do it, that's all well and good. But try and think about ahead as well. Think about your background processes. The more that you can do, the more that you can chart and bring it to the developers, the better it was for me. I myself, I thought I had a good working relationship with the sprint teams and stuff. And testing was crucial. I like testing. It could be just something simple, put in the postcode, put in a numerical, the app was going to ask you for a numerical character, then put in the alpha character because you need to break the system. And I enjoyed breaking the system. I think I managed to break it once and, you know, that was a highlight for me. But I thoroughly enjoyed working on the Field Workers Project. You'd probably be able to tell it through my voice. I just loved it. It was something different. It was something, I've worked for Birmingham for about 15 years. But to say, come into the creativity room with us and we will help create together, it was just something not done. So I really had a fantastic time in that technical kitchen, bringing out these APIs, seeing what we could do. And yeah, it was just, it was just, it was a great journey. Let me talk a little bit about the negativity or the... It's not to do with the app at all. The app works. The negative things, I think, that we needed to consider a little bit more was, and I'm sure that, Azim, you alluded to it, it was the connectivity across the city. Sometimes you have these black spots where the signal is not very good. And so my offices at the moment, they are kind of struggling sometimes with their companion app. Because they've got two different apps at the moment. They've got the Birmingham Guardian, fantastic. But they've also got a separate one to help them. And I think going forward, I can't wait until we can mesh the companion app, the lone workers app, straight into, and I know a lot of work's been done on that. Because that's key, because we just want one tool that can do everything for them. I can also see the potential. So for managers that are ready to go and to think about this, you've really got to think about this product. First of all, getting the foundation right, just the foundation. But think also about future. I'm already thinking about the future of the app and that's why I know it's so great. It's just fantastic. And it is really a game changer. So for me and for the team, it was just balancing their expectations. That was another key issue as well. Balancing their expectations because they're not the expert. They just say, okay, I'm the end user and this is what I want to see. We've got to make that happen. And so I worked really closely, as I said before, with the development team so that could happen. But I thoroughly enjoyed the journey. And I would say to anybody that, you know, that wants to do anything like the Birmingham Guardian app, make sure your managers are enthusiastic. Make sure, because you're going to get those spots when things days and you think, oh my God, I just want to curl up. But because you can see the end goal and the vision for your internal and external customers, then I think that's what made it worthwhile for me. Very tiring, but it was a good journey. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Really appreciate your time today. Likewise, Azim. I haven't seen any questions in the Q and A. So feel free to throw them in there or if you want to put your hand up now and come on camera and ask a question and go ahead. Yep, Levanya?
Thank you so very much for this fantastic work. And hi Cat Cat. I met you before once and all the follow-up on LinkedIn as well. So this is fantastic work. And I've been, when I first came across, I started reading about it and it's fantastic because for me, we have actually embarked on a kind of service transformation of one service, like pest control, and also thinking about other services and the commonalities. So that's one of the things that you mentioned, which is very useful. And particularly, if I take an example of pest control, our officers are out there and they face the same problems. And when you're discussing about these, you know, the lone worker thing and then they're talking about the marker. Yes, everything is like, these are the things that discussions that we are having as well and which is very interesting. I have a couple of questions. So for example, to start with, when you said commonalities, you brought all these services together and then you found those different commonalities. I want to understand, what are those services that you found commonalities with? To start, I'll just let you answer that first.
Yeah. So in terms of the initial discovery, Levanya, what we did is that we did understand that we didn't focus on the commonalities, sorry, the differences, i.e. in terms of the functions of their service areas. What we focused on is what are the challenges and the commonalities of the challenges within the field? And with that, what we were able to do was to actually look at a number of personas. And we realised, actually, if you've got an enforcer, somebody who was going to enforce something, you know, whether it's in pest control or... And what we realised is, as we brought those together, And what we realised is, as we brought those together, they're different directories. But their needs were very similar. Um now, you know, I uh uh um please get in touch with us because we'll share with you. The the personas that we initially brought down. We had a number of personas. We bottled them down to, I think, three personas. And then we started to work with those key kind of personas and move that forward. Um but we did re- we we were very focused on the fact that. This is was about finding what the challenges that they had with within the 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 field in terms of doing their role. Not what their process challenges are, not what their operational challenges are. That's different. And 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 we. It it took us a long time to 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 get the operational teams to think in the way that we were thinking. Because they wanted to come back to, well, no, we need something very precise, very, we are different. And I mean, we had the word. We are different. And we broke that notion down a bit and said, actually, are you really different from a pest control individual who's enforcing something? Or is investigating something to another investiga- investigator in another area?
This is fantastic. Thank you. Um. Detail chat. The other question I had was you, your one of the biggest challenge was bringing different uh bringing data from different various systems into this, right? I wanted to understand, give me, can you give me an example of what are those different systems? What are those different directories or departments? That you had to bring in all that information? I want to give some examples.
Yeah, so so with regards to the risk marker in particular, um it is the single biggest challenge that we had. So we're talking about today, we bring together, um there's there's kind of, I think, five key 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 kind of systems and there's a number of others. We will bring in together housing information, housing risks with with um um adult social care with with other areas. Now. When you bring that together, you're talking about individuals raising risks differently in those line of business. Categorizing, no, no, no categorization of 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 risk in a standard way across all of that. And and actually, the other big one was, we were amazed, some of the risks in the way that they were recorded were actually part of notes. Rather than determined risks. And again, it was about how do how do we bring those um over? So so we did. Uh we we've, one of the things, and by the way, what what we said is, actually, this is too big of a challenge to deal with. So what we said is. What we what we a- as a as a way forward, we said, let us let us bring in all your risks into into what we call a tier. One. And we still give you access to only your risks. So housing, we bring yours only give. And then. You, when you get your data better and when you're ready, you propagate those risks into tier two, which is global across there. It gives them the ability and the flexibility to go at their pace in getting their data right. Getting that uh and and also remember, some of the risks are not, it's not right to to have a housing risk that or adult social care risk outside that area. Because that's just not, it's not, it's not something that's, we don't wanna increase fear into some of the individuals on or 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 anxiety. When actually, we don't need to inform them about certain risks. So this was about managing in a way, in in a way that we can actually help them. Change and transform. So that's the that tier one and tier two was a real, and that came from our product owner on. On on uh Simon Niash, who was head of occupational health within uh um um uh within this. So he he was the product owner. For the just the 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 um risk market component.
Thank you. I I really liked the way when you said uh the data governance aspect, but also the flexibility in giving the time to transform. Which is which is uh which is and which is so important.
It is.
Um it is so important that. And the other question I had was um around, um again, so we've got the risk marker, but also. Do we also have something like uh uh information for where uh the extra assistance is needed? So for example, some of our residents will need that extra assistance. That means that they will need that extra time. What kind of assistance do they need? Do they need? Uh assistance in moving furniture, that level of details for the frontline worker. Uh yeah.
Just explain that a bit more, Levanya. I don't, so when you, when you say assistance, um yeah, so just just explain that a bit more. What do you mean by that?
Okay, I'll explain. Um say, for example, there's an elderly resident with uh additional needs. Maybe he's uh they have mobility impairments as well. Then.
Ah, I know where you're going. Okay, yes, yeah. Yeah, so I know exactly where you're going. So what we've done, uh uh so what Simon decided is that the the we knew that this was gonna be. Just a big change for us, just to bring the risks into one. His next phase of this, from a risk point of view, is to say. Now, are our field workers taking the right level? Uh um are they are they? Have they got the right level of guidance when they go out that actually you need to be aware that you're gonna need to help this citizen because they can't move around. So therefore, you're gonna need two people. That's that that is the. The 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 next part of this is to say, today, we know about the risks. Tomorrow, what are we doing to mitigate? And make sure we're ready to deal with the with the risks that we're going into. Um so that's the second kind of component on this. And then. The third one, by the way, is what additional data is gonna allow us to better understand risk? Before, so like a predictive model. And that's that's ultimately where we wanna get to, understanding our proactive. Today, we're reactive. We wanna get to a proactive model in terms of risk management um in in where we are. And that's the three-step pro. And that is much larger than the uh um field worker itself. It's it's something that Simon embedded the what we've done here. Into a a a larger kind of uh transformation he's trying to do around risk.
This is fantastic. Thank you so much. Just one last question.
Just sorry, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just. Steve, we're running out of time, but feel free to email us afterwards. Sorry about that. Um we're just running short. Uh Stephen, you've been waiting patiently with your hand up. Um if you'd like to come in and ask a question, but thank you for your question, Naga.
So I'm I'm Steve McDonald, Devon County Council. So we're actually working on a um a program around highways, around how we better kind of manage licensing applications. And reporting a problem. One of the things that we're looking at is how we better kind of report the location of. Of where things are and where people should be going. Um so particularly where we've got a large rural county. So it's kind of like. Where's a cottage in the middle of nowhere that kind of social worker needs to go to? Or where's the flight tipping that needs to go to? It is location something that you kind of better location mapping or kind of reporting? Is that something that you've looked at?
So so that that is on the backlog, Stephen. I'm gonna be honest with you. It's it's and and that's on the backlog as a geolocation. We. We wanna get a better understa- and 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 it will come in in particular with regards to um when we expand. Our lone working capability in particular because we need it for that. Now, one of the things I will say, Stephen, and and um you know, is. We've ensured that we've got um and we worked with our unions to make sure people are not. What we we had a a a a lot of the unions speak to us about the 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 kind of um uh. The 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 kind of concern and the worry that actually, is this gonna be a monitoring tool for uh uh Birmingham City Council? Or is this gonna enable? So we've taken a slower approach with regards to certain features on the basis of the fact that. We wanted the unions to work with us and 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 walk the path that we're walking, rather than trying to. Uh and bring a transformation element. And that's why I say that we haven't bought that feature in particular around uh around locality. Uh um and 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 that.
Risk of the the big brother.
Yeah, absolutely.
mentality and actually I'm being monitored. Yeah, I guess we're thinking probably in the opposite way in the sense of, you know, how do you get to a. Fallen tree, you know, the report of a fallen tree in the middle of nowhere? Or how do you kind of better go and kind of know where a pothole is? So actually. Yeah, I guess it's interesting thinking of that kind of principle of unintended consequences.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So so yeah, definitely gonna be in there. It's 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 on the roadmap, um but i- it is something that's gonna come down the line. And and it's geomapping, um and all of that is gonna come in. Yes, definitely.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, for your question. Um I know we've just got five minutes left. We've got one more question in the Q and A. Um it's kind of a joint question from Sanjay and Rachel. Um Azim, I guess it's what we were working on last week. What is the future focus for the Field Worker Programme?
Ah, okay. We we we're working on a roadmap now. Um we're one of the biggest areas that have adopted. Um what we're doing is is our housing division. Um we're we're in discussions with them um and some of the other areas, city operations as well. We're we're doing, we're looking to to a pilot with the city operations uh team around um uh 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 our. Our bin man in in the sense that we wanted to be able to potentially give them the ability um to record information on the go. And and this is a big step for us because this is, this is individuals who are not used to having a device um uh uh or being on our network at all. So it's 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 individuals that w- w- we need to slowly bring on to on on to this. But we are doing a small pilot with them as well. But there is. There there is a a further roadmap that we're gonna be releasing um in terms of next um next areas that we're gonna be moving this into.
Great, thank you, Azim. Um if there's no other questions, I'd just like to flag that. We do have another session on Friday at one o'clock. Um another one of our big corporate programme to to children's, um uh sorry, the customer programme to do the discovery in the children's employment services. Um with our partner method. So please do try and join that. Um I'll send a link afterwards. If there's no other questions, um I can give back four minutes of your time. And again, thank you everyone for joining. Really do appreciate it.